Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have nearly exceeded the halfway point of the General Assembly's regular session, so tonight we thought it would be appropriate to bring representatives from our two lobbying firms to provide an update to the council, really framing where this session is at and what we foresee happening in the second half. Without further ado, we will ask Chris Ropie from John Barge and Associates to come up and give you an update, and Chris will be followed by Tom Robbins from Strategic Capital.
Hello, good evening. Can I shut this computer?
Fine by me.
All right, well, thanks for having me this evening, Chris Ropie with John Barge and Associates, representing your guys inside the Capitol. Happy to be here with you and the privilege to get to represent you in your business. There are eight weeks to go in the session. There's a lot of heavy lifting still to do as far as sort of big achievements. They haven't gotten really across the finish line yet. There's a lot to be done. The Senate has only passed thirty-five bills to date. The House has passed about twice, twice as many as that. This week you're going to see in the House, they're going to take up the budget, about a $29 billion budget. They will get that passed this week and then send it over to the Senate for them to do their work with that, and I'll touch on a few priorities for the city when I get down to some of the things specifically for you all. The governor has a few big priorities that he is working on this year. A lot of them have to do with infrastructure and economic development slash workforce training is what he's really been talking about. The three main issues he's working on as far as his agenda, most of the legislature's been supportive of, and a few outliers that are holding things up right now, what's called his Fast Track program, which is for not traditional age students to get back into some sort of training or higher education level of expertise they can attain to go get back in the workforce in a different role to meet the needs of our employers. They're making changes to the Missouri Works Program, which is consolidating how we do our workforce training, moves it over to higher education, creates a closing fund, and better lets the Department of Economic Development with the Department of Higher Education be able to try and attract businesses to the state of Missouri. And then he has reorganized several departments as well within the state government. Like I mentioned, he's taking the Department of Economic Development and doing a lot of workforce training measures that they do and shifting it over to higher education. The Division of Energy is moving over to the Department of-
I'm getting a message that people are not hearing you. Can you speak into the microphone, please? Thank you. Yeah, make sure it's on.
Can you hear me?
No.
I can talk loud.
Well, it's going online and people can't see it. That's the problem, so.
Talk louder. The mic's not working.
You want me to wait?
Yeah.
You're still live, but barely.
Yeah, I thought about that too. Can we just scratch that over?
It doesn't reach, Mark. That should reach.
Is that better?
That's it.
There, there we go. That's better. So as I was saying, part of the governor's effort to reorganize state government is an additional thing is taking the Division of Energy and moving that over to the Department of Natural Resources. He's doing that by an executive order, and then he's taken the Public Service Commission and the Office of Public Counsel, which regulate our investor-owned utilities, and he's moving those over to the Department of Insurance. And then a small change, but I know important to this community, the Arts Council, he is moving that under the Lieutenant Governor's office and the job duties that come with that constitutional statewide office. The other, the other big agenda items that you'll see from the Republican-controlled legislature that they're going to try to get across the finish line in the remaining eight weeks, there's some tort reform issues they want to get done on, on making some changes to our judicial and litigation system that we have in our state. There will be some pro-life legislation that gets a lot of attention that deals with a, it's called the heartbeat bill, to make some changes to enhance that for Republicans in Jeff City. Education reform is another big priority you're going to see a lot of time get spent on. You've probably seen in the news some changes in higher education regarding the Title IX process for sexual assaults that take place on our higher education campuses. There's an effort to reform that that will receive a lot of attention as we move down towards the end of session. Bridge funding, which I'll talk about that here specifically to Independence in a second. You've got competing, competing ways to do that. The House has an idea of how they want to do it, and the Senate and the governor have a way that they'd like to do it. Mayor, go ahead. Oh, I thought you had a question. I'm sorry. And then there'll be some reforms that will be attempted to made, be made to Medicaid, to go to some, what I would call some, some required work, up to eighty hours a week to be eligible for Medicaid moving forward in our state. Prescription drug monitoring program, we currently are, I think, the last state remaining to not have that on a statewide basis. They're working on that as well. And then the final big issue, which I know is of interest to you all as well, is the low-income housing tax credit program. Getting that back up and running is going to come along with some significant changes to the program legislatively in order to do that. So you'll see, you'll see those things get talked about as far as priorities from House and Senate leadership and the governor as we go down the home stretch here. A few issues specific to Independence that we've been working on your behalf with Senator Rizzo, trying to get some funding for the Truman Library. He's working on $2 million this year, and then I think $2 million next year as well. And he will, you know, he's working with the Appropriations Chairman in the Senate, and once the budget bills come over, he will continue to try to make that happen in the appropriation committee work as it moves through the Senate. And then another bill that he's, he's being very helpful on is the abandoned property cleanup legislation, as I call it, where you can have immunity for people who want to go into these properties and clean them up for the betterment of the neighborhood, for the city, you know, whatever the case may be. But we need to get Independence added to that legislation, and we will attempt to do that on the Senate floor. If you look at some, some items of where we're at with the budget, we are at about a 5% decrease right now from where we were last year at this time. And then in order for the governor to not withhold and for the rest of this fiscal year, and then for the legislature itself to not have restrict, spending restrictions for next year, we have got to close out the, the end of this fiscal year at about 1.7% growth. You've seen some things in the press about the Department of Revenue and how some of the withholdings tables were miscalculated, and everyone's pointing fingers at each other. But at the end of the day, I think it'll come out closer to where it needs to be, but I know a lot of people are pretty nervous about the cuts that could take place if we don't get there with the amount of revenue that we, we bring into the state. Regional crime lab, I know a very important topic that you all are working on. We had several meetings with the governors, senior policy advisors, met with them again, I think, two weeks ago to just remind them that it is something of interest, if it is where they would like to see this solution take place, that we would love to be a part of that. I think in, in the governor's budget, just to give you some specifics of while he is not, I think, ready to do that and the expenditures that would come with that at this time, what he has done to try to address that issue is recommended here, nine new FTEs to work on the backlog that has occurred with our DNA testing and rape kits to try to figure out and further take care of those problems that we're seeing across the state. The House and the governor himself, that was what his department recommended, Department of Public Safety, I think that you'll see come out of the House Committee will be five new FTEs and about $300,000 in new funding to cover that. And then the toxicology equipment, there's several new pieces of equipment that they have tried to put in the budget that the, the House and the governor recommended, and the House upheld, that you'll see come out of there of about $300,000 to address that issue. And then in order, I know at, at the state crime lab, they are losing a lot of criminologists to other departments or federal agencies, and they aren't able to keep that, that workforce there. So they've, they've tried to increase some funding for that as well to not have so much turnover and to keep their really good people on so they can process these cases in an efficient manner. So the, the department requested some money there that I think the Senate will work on to try to make sure that, it's about $300,000 to, to cover those, to keep, keep those employees stay put where they are currently. Municipal court reform, your ability to suspend driver's license, one of our favorite subjects that, there are several senators who just, over on the St. Louis side of the state, who don't see eye to eye with us on that issue, and it's been challenging to get them to get on board with the, the ability for us to protect the public and for you to do your jobs and your, and your different departments here to do their jobs to protect the public. I've had some good conversations. John Barge and I have talked with some of the, the main opponents to that in the past, and I think they are willing to work on that issue this year. There's, there's a piece of legislation sponsored by Senator Emery, who has several municipalities in his district that are very interested in this issue. So he's pushing very hard. We've got a bill out of, out of committee in the Senate to address that. And what that process, it's, it's not perfect, and I think you'll see some changes will still come along with what he's going to propose in his bill. But he sets up essentially an administrative tribunal where any of your failure to appear and your ordinance violations, minor traffic violations will get kicked over to that system so it clears off of your municipal court docket, and then they are allowed to assess points essentially if they don't show up to that tribunal administrative court. And they can enact the same penalties as you can do in your municipal court, you just do it in that, that aspect. And I know there's some headache and some costs, but that seemed to be several cities were interested in that, doing it that way if it allowed them to address this issue. I think you'll see changes made to that as we go forward on the Senate floor. We'll keep you posted and see where that goes. We just need to have the debate because I think we can get to a place where people are comfortable doing something to solve this without increasing fines. That's the big fear of what folks in the St. Louis area don't want to do, but we're going to have a good debate on that and see where that goes. There's a, a similar bill in the House that does it in a more traditional way, which just allows cities to be able to assess points, to, or let Department of Revenue assess points for failure to appear, which would resolve your issue as well. That's been voted out of House Committee, and I think you'll see that put on the, the House calendar here pretty quickly to get debated by the full House and try to move forward. Another issue of high importance to, to a lot of the bigger cities around the state of Missouri is dealing with the use tax on internet sales, and that's what they're calling is a use tax of how to collect that money. Senator Sandy Crawford has a piece of legislation that seems to ideally be the vehicle to do that. And just kind of how that works is it creates a econ, what they call an economic nexus, which is a threshold of $100,000. If you do that much in sales, you have to participate, you have to collect those taxes and submit them to the state of Missouri. And then it has what's called a facilitator collection as well, which is like an Amazon type. They would have to then, to help their smaller sellers out, they're the ones responsible for collecting and submitting that to the state of Missouri. So I know that's, that's something that's, that's very important on a lot of people's minds around the state, specifically here, that I think you'll see a lot of attention and a lot of debate about as it, as it moves forward. There's a bill on the, the Senate calendar that's been debated that deals with some corporate tax cuts that this language has been added to as sort of sweetener to get some people to go along with that idea of further cutting corporate taxes. I don't know if they will get that done or not, or how that will all shake out at the end of the day, but we are keeping an eye on it, and if it's, if it's going to pass, we want to be a part of it with solving this use tax issue for, for you all here locally. Bridge funding, like I mentioned, the, the House has an idea of how they want to do it, the Senate and the governor have an idea of how they would like to do it. The Houses, excuse me, I'll start with the Senate. The Senate's proposal, Senator Schatz, who is the President Pro Tem of the Senate, he, that's the, the number one ranking, ranking leadership position in the Senate, is carrying the bill, so that's a good sign to show how important it is. It would address 250 bridges around the state. It would, they would spend $351 million, and they would pay that off with, with bonds at $30 million a year. Several of those bridges are here in Independence and several are in the Kansas City area and surrounding areas. The three that stuck out to me were the Delaware Avenue and Truman Library Drive Bridge, which would be about $2.1 million. That would be coming into the community to fix. The Highway 24 Bridge, just right by Buckner, I'm not 100% sure how, how close that is, but that's about a $7.6 million investment that would go there to fix four bridges. And then Blue Ridge and Forty is a $5.2 million bridge there that would get fixed if this proposal would, would get passed. The House doesn't like that idea. It's too much in interest payments. They want to fund it through general revenue on an annual basis, which I think some of the senators have problems with that because they don't, they don't feel like that is the proper way to be able to plan and do big projects, knowing that the money will or won't be there in subsequent years, and so they'd like to see them do it their way, the way, the way the resolution is proposed in the Senate. And I think there's about $175 million in federal transportation dollars at stake as well if we don't do it in a way that, that the Senate wants to do it, and they don't want to miss out on that opportunity. The last thing that I want to address is some waivers about mental health and Medicaid dollars that are eligible for that. There, several states have, have gotten the department, the federal department under Trump to, to allow them to do a waiver where you can have more than 16 beds for a mental health facility. That we have gone away in the state of Missouri from warehousing or from institutionalizing mental health patients. And so it's, it's a way where there's, there's two proposals that they're looking at from the state of Missouri and how we want to address that. One is for severe substance abuse problems. The local community partnerships around the state are very hesitant to invest the infrastructure needed to do that on such a short-term fix, so the department is still trying to figure out if they want to go down that road or not because they don't have that local buy-in to seek that waiver, so they're determining that still. And then the, the waiver for what is called serious and persistent mental disorder, that is something that the department is in the process of applying to the, to the feds for, and it's probably a year away from having a, a decision from the feds whether they will allow that waiver in the state of Missouri. Like I said, 13 other states have done that, and so they're going to go down that, that process of figuring out some mental health needs. That'll affect a lot of local communities around the state. Then there's, I think we're tracking about 271 pieces of legislation. None of them are as major as some of the ones I just listed, but it's, it's the state and, and the policies coming from lawmakers that want to tell you what to do, and they want to increase regulations or, or do things that make it harder for, for you to run your city. We're keeping an eye on all of those. There's a handful that are probably getting a little bit of traction, but we are working with your local delegation to address those. There's, you can't put out 271 fires as they're moving through the legislature, the ones that actually look like are going to get serious debate. Those are what we focus on, on your behalf. So I'll turn, answer questions or let Tommy address some of the, some of the things they're doing and can answer questions at the end, or however, however y'all'd like to do it.
Why don't we do these first?
Okay. All right.
So are there any comments or questions from friends on the legislation that they're tracking for us? I just have one, the local use tax. I know Sandy Crawford feels this is really gaining, the party's really gaining love and interest from the state.
Yep.
This issue on behalf of all the cities across the state that do not currently have the ability to collect this local use tax. So I understand her bill is really to clarify, you know, the collection and the administration of that local use tax. Regardless, cities still have to pass it.
Mm-hmm.
Because, no, we have not yet to come up with any method, and a lot of things have been discussed about streamlined sales tax, you know.
Right.
But the bottom line is in order for any city in the state to be able, or county in the state to be able to participate in that, voters have to-
Exactly right. This authorizes cities, or wherever the political jurisdiction might be, to the ability then to go say this is what we want to do, and you'd have to do it locally. That's correct.
And the same would be true if there were a federal change made, which we've always referred to as the, you know, Main Street Fairness Act.
Yep.
Cities who do not currently have or require local use tax currently do not participate in that.
That is right. Yes. Yep, that's exactly right.
Okay.
And I, I think you'll see that legislation, there's several bills that have, have crossed chambers where it would fit as an amendment, and you'll, I mean, there's so much interest in this issue and trying to solve it. It's a priority for the governor, I know, as well. So I think, you know, this will get debated a lot, and we'll get put on several other pieces of legislation that are, are coming our way down the stretch here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Rock Props, evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present. I, I tracked, I decided that I would use your priorities to track what I tell you. And the first one would be, city supports local control rights of way in public assets, dealing with pole attachments and high-speed wireless development. So that, last year, we were able to work out a bill that we are very proud of, that took the cap off the utility poles and then instituted on the light poles, $150 cap, which is the second highest in the nation. So we're very proud of that, not to rest on our laurels. We, we watched every bill that has come through, and they, they've attempted no incursions, no changes to that bill this year. So the time period has passed, it was March 1st, for sponsoring new legislation, so any sort of changes has to be done by amendment, and at this point, they're running out of time to, to be heard in committee. So all's looking well on that front. Related to this would be the franchise fee. Cable is losing market share, and so they're trying to find a way to cut their costs. They decided to file Senate Bill 273, which would gut the franchise fee from 5% to 3%. That would cost Independence $540,000, which I was able to find out like that thanks to Mayor Weir and John, they, and Zach. Your, your staff is, is amazing, and of all our clients, nobody is more engaged than them. So that, that would amount to edges $500,000, seven and a half firefighters, eight police officers, and like 15% of your road overlay. Obviously, that would be a problem. So we saw that bill, it, it came up, we gathered a coalition, and we isolated cable so that they were the lone wolf in support, and there were so ma, they were, everybody else was against it. Everyone, strange bad fellows is what politics makes, right? Us and the telecoms were up there together. So that was nice. It's always nice to, to be on the winning side. Now, the session's not over, but so far, there's been no movement on it since it's, it was heard on February 27th. So we feel like that's, that's a good sign. Net metering, you want to keep your local control? No bill has been filed on, on net metering. Decoupling, you, you oppose that? No bill has been filed on that. So those two areas seem to be safe. I wanted to discuss the state water quality loan funding. I saw that in your priorities. If I could learn more about that, then we could find an appropriate sponsor for next year in order to push that. I ju, I don't know enough about it, but I, I've been looking at what, what you sent, and it looks like something, you know, that we could certainly push and that we would want to. But it, it would probably need to be next year, though if staff or somebody could get us some language, we can try to offer it in committee, and we'd be happy to do that. So perhaps that, that, we could get the conversation started that way this year. So my favorite bill, and Councilmember Van Camp's favorite bill, is the film tax credit. Let's see, House Bill 923, it authorizes tax credit for qualified film projects and caps program at $4.5 million. It, it expired in 2013, and you'll see countless programs being filmed, set in Missouri, filmed in Georgia. Why? Because Georgia has the best tax credit program. So Councilman Van Camp came in and testified and make, may I approach? I don't know. Is this like court? Is this like court? I wasn't sure.
Here, I just wanted to, he did kind of work there.
Wow.
Well, thank you.
So will you read that? What, what is your quote there?
I mean, we're at-
Movies about imagination.
I'll take your word for it.
There it is.
Movies excite the imagination, and you could, cannot put a price on that. So that was well received, and it was promptly voted out, and it was just referred to rules today. So it, it still has, has to make its way through the Senate, and the Senate is, is a, is a gauntlet of sorts for anything tax credit, but we're moving in the right direction. I, that was, that was the best attended and most positive hearing I've probably been to this session. So thank you for your help. Thanks for letting us engage on that. I think it'd make Missouri a better place. That's, that, those are the, the priorities that I show. There's one other that didn't, that wasn't on the priorities that I've discussed in the call, on our biweekly calls, and that's Senate Bill 66, which deals with water safety and security. You oppose it, and you got us engaged about, right before the hearing, and it has not moved since. So it's, it's embargoed ever since January 29th when it was heard. So we show no movement on that, but we will track it, and we'll track all the bills that are moving to make sure that it doesn't, isn't added on to any of those. So.
How was your question?
Well, thank you.
Thank you for jumping in with us on the film tax-
Yeah.
It's a little up-
It's, oh, it's, I mean-
... we're thoughtful of work. Thanks for helping us with that. Like, you know, it's certainly become a very hot topic. We were last weekend, a regional tourism meeting, and, you know, a lot of discussion about that. I know Arts KC and several regional arts organizations are really pushing forward as well, so that's great. Something, you know, Councilmember Van Camp has that passion about since he came onto this council about getting that restored, and so hopefully maybe it'll get a little bit of traction. And also, you know, it is long, I'm playing defense. I feel absolutely certain that the reason some of these things are coming forward is because of the work that we did, we did last year.
Certainly.
That, you know, people just don't want to fight the city with their pets on some of these issues. So thanks for being there every day to remind them that we still care about these things, and we will stand our ground.
Thank you very much, and that's an excellent point. I should have added that this is the first year since I started lobbying that there are no net metering or decoupling bills. So I, we won't take full credit for it, but it is, it will take a little.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You know, it's easy, I mean, we have our form, but having been down there before, it's really, you know, that we haven't done this, we haven't got a crime lab, we haven't got this, we haven't got that. But as the mayor quite precisely pointed out, we've stopped, and those are victories also. You don't always see those victories unless it's brought here. And given the state of affairs, no pun intended, I, you know, new governor, old one of the years, new things, wanting to make his mark, want, you know, erasing what had been put in, I, thank you very much for your endeavors.
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you very much.
Next, Uptown Market update.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, about a year ago, the city broke ground on construction of the Uptown Market on the Independence Square. One year later, we've not only completed construction, but hosted a number of successful events there and really changed the landscape of, of the Independence Square and the Truman Road Corridor in accordance with our strategic plan. So tonight, I have asked our Director of Parks, Recreation and Tourism, Eric Urfer, to come give the council an update on where we stand, a little less than a year since we began operation there, and share some of those successes with the council on, on a real community success story for us.
Great. Thank you, Zach.
Great, thank you Zach. I know, my gosh, it was a little crowded up here before, so this is good. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come and give an update on the first six months of operations at your new Independence Uptown Market. As you may recall, the city cut the ribbon on the new market facility in late August of two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and eighteen, just in time for our Santa Calagon festivities. Since that time, the market has played host to a number of different events, classes and private rentals. The, one of the first and foremost, obviously, the, the steepest programs that we've got going on, there's the Independence Farmers Market. The market was moved from its old location, which was in a parking lot, to this new facility last fall. And since that time, the attendance at the market has gone up and the vendors have reported so too have their sales. In addition to the traditional farmers market, we also added a winters market this last year. That market is open to the public one Saturday a month through the off-season. We received a lot of positive feedback regarding the quality of those, the products that are sold and especially the number of types of vendors that we've been putting in that facility. The amount of activities and the family-friendly atmosphere for both the traditional winter markets has been very well received. And the turnout for the market has been great, but so too has all the participation levels at all the different special events that we've had there so far. To refresh your memory, here are a few of the current, a few of the events that the market has hosted through its first six months. The US Capitol Christmas tree, of course, paid us a little visit. As did a number of our resident pet populations for the Family Furry and Bright Holiday Photo Event, which was very popular. From holiday parties to storytelling, to zumba-athons, pep rallies and family game nights. The Independence Uptown Market has been a very, very busy place over the last six months. In addition to those events, staff took full advantage of the new square footage that we now have under our umbrella to develop a whole new slate of programs for our community. Among them, the Second Sunday Uptown Flea Market has been extremely popular. And the make and take workshops have been extremely popular as well. Almost all of these have sold out, so much so that we've had to extend it into two, sometimes three sessions to accommodate all of those on the waiting list. Even with all of that activity though, there's still been plenty of time for people to rent and reserve the facility for different types of private events, from meetings to social gatherings. The community certainly has turned out to try to, to hold their space in there as well. The facility has about three hundred and sixty as far as the seating capacity is concerned. We do have a catering kitchen, sound system, tables and chairs that are also available for rental. As I said, there are a lot of different graduation parties, wedding events, fundraisers, meetings and seminars that have already taken place there. And much like the feed, the feedback that we've received from all of the different patrons attending all of the different special events, those that have come to rent the facility have given us high marks, not just on the facility itself, but the staff that they've dealt with in renting their, for their special event. So far, and this is slightly dated, this is about three or four weeks old now, we have had eleven different private rentals, forty-three different programs, and we have hosted thirty-two different special events at the facility, all in the past six months. And there's still more to come. This coming up spring and summer, we have zumba events, they're back on the queue, we have more family game nights lined up, we have more make and takes, and we even have another Project Linus in the works as well. Project Linus is a group of volunteers that comes in and they make afghans for children in need. The last one that came through, they actually did a whole series of afghans for children that were in the NICU, which is a pretty special program. So we also have some social activities for homeschool kids, classic car shows, a summer concert series lined up, and of course, the return of the Popular Farmers Market. Again, all will be starting here soon, the market opens this May and then we'll be taking off from there throughout the summer season. So for more information about any of those different type of events or programs, you can visit the website that's on the bottom of this slide, or for any of the rental information there as well. So again, thank you for your support so far for this facility. It has been one of those difference makers and we are proud to have it under the Parks, Recreation and Tourism umbrella. And with that, and that concludes the first six months of report and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Not so much question, but just more comments. I think we've done an outstanding job and, and thank you Eric for making this a, helping make this a success. I know the discussions that we had surrounding the, the, this possibility in the community conversations we've had, I received a lot for and also a lot against. And surprisingly, I've received quite a few calls from people who were against this for whatever reasons, that you know what, this has changed the landscape, this is, looks nicer than what I anticipated. And by God, they're, they're using it, it's full, it's a nice facility. So, I've had an interesting mix of people calling me saying, you know what, this is actually decent. And knowing independent politics, that doesn't happen a lot. So, I chalked that up to, to good, good credit on your guys' part for helping us see that vision moving forward.
I appreciate that and I'll pass that on to staff. I don't want to take any credit for any of those different programs that you just saw, we have an amazing team working on this.
And I've been working with Becca a lot though and I really appreciate all of her work and trying to help organize and doing some different events there for some different organizations who are trying to think out of the box of, well, where can we go and hold something that's different and unique and this fits the bill? So, she's been awesome too.
Yes, she has, thank you, I'll pass it on.
Thank, thank you Eric, good management and I don't know how we did without it. So, thanks.
Thank you.
We knew that this was going to have a big impact on our community. I don't think any of, any of us expected it to be as popular. I mean, really hats off to your staff for just being phenomenal and marketing it for all kinds of different opportunities of always, you know, providing just excellent customer service to the people. I mean, it's been, you know, we haven't heard anything but positive feedback from people. And it was just a smash at Santa Calagon. Every vendor who, you know, had the privilege of being in there was just delighted, you know, with the facility. So, you know, really good that the community came forward and, and did support the councilman before with this. And I know, you know, season two was just going to be even, even better. We already have some really exciting planned out for the spring and summer time, so.
Add to that, this building was not fully funded by the City of Independence. We had the Rotarian, the Rotary Club step up and have their fundraiser and they really helped out with this, so.
It's been very important.
I too have received glowing reports about this and, uh, received some doubters too before this, but they have been overshadowed by the success in just six months. I mean, this mel, well, may be the second greatest program we've had. Anywhere, any. No, congratulations and, you know, we've talked about several things to be having there than, one of my favorite ping pong things and so on and so forth. What a success and it's due to everybody, but thank you.
Thank you, we'll pass that on, thank you.
Me and Councilman Huff are going to be representing at these awards, the city, and I had to skip out on a neighborhood meeting, I'm sorry. I wanted to be there.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, last year during our budget development process, Chief Halsey presented an interesting challenge to us and that was to identify new funding to be able to really meet a strong need and desire of this community and, and the city council. And that was to provide adequate staffing for what we were calling a street crimes unit, to really provide officers who would get into the community, into the residential and commercial areas and begin to tackle issues of crime and disorder. We were able to identify the funding, the council was receptive to supporting that budget recommendation and we've had a tremendous amount of success with that since its inception. So tonight, I've asked Major John Cato to come forward and let the council know of the work that the men and women of the Street Crimes Unit have been able to do in just a very short amount of time. So I will yield to Major Cato.
Thank you. Madam Mayor and council, you know, in almost three decades with the Police Department, there's probably a half dozen times I can think that we've actually done something that's out of the norm, out of the box, or was new for us, that has really made a, a very impactful difference community-wide at one time. I think the implementation of the Street Crimes Unit is one of those examples. And I'd be remiss if I didn't express my thanks and the thanks of the department to each and every one of you for your support, the City Manager's Office and of course, our Chief, Chief Halsey. We've exceeded expectations at this early date. I don't think we, we ever anticipated we'd have the early success of hitting the ground running like we had or like we have. It's truly a unique example of devoted resources that meets a particular need at a particular time and, and the rapid success that you can have. It's my pleasure here shortly to introduce to you Sergeant Justin English of our Street Crimes Unit. He's going to share with you some, some raw numbers and some statistics and some examples of their good work and their progress. It speaks loads to them as far as the commitment. That unit, they're all here tonight on their own time, either that or they don't want me to talk about them when they're not here. But I'm, I'm impressed every day by their devotion, their commitment and the quick process that they've made. So, I would remind you, the only thing I would remind is some of these examples that you'll be shared with tonight, specific details aren't evident because they're involving many cases that are clear, that are currently still under adjudication and still in process. So, that limits some of the information of specifics that we can share, but without any more delay, I'll introduce to you Sergeant English. Thank you.
Good evening, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to update everyone with the success that the Street Crimes Unit has had thus far. And I want to thank you all for your buy-in early on in this, in this process. I think you'll find that it's, it's definitely something that has been beneficial for the city and hopefully will continue to be. So the Street Crimes Unit was, there's been a lot of buildup for the Street Crimes Unit, but it, it takes a lot of logistics to put things in place to get us where we are here today. So the unit was, was not actually officially formed and there were no personnel allocated until December eleventh of two thousand and eighteen. And at that point, there were four detectives and one sergeant. As of January twenty-second of two thousand and nineteen, three additional detectives were transferred to give us the full complement of the seven detectives and myself as the field supervisor. So from December eleventh to March twenty-fifth of two thousand and nineteen, the Street Crimes has actually worked sixty working days in the field that we have had the opportunity to take enforcement. In those sixty days, and these numbers actually were submitted last week, I, I can add to some of those numbers. We've recovered actually twenty-six firearms that were either stolen or in conjunction with another crime. Many of those were involved in drug trafficking or other violent crime, but all twenty-six of those firearms are directly related to another felony crime. We have eight firearm enhancements. Those are things like silencers or homemade suppressors that they would put on those weapons to, to help further their crime, but make it undetected. We've recovered eight of those. Felony warrant arrest, those are felony warrants that were issued by the court for felony crimes for outstanding persons and we have arrested fifty-five people on felony warrants. City warrants, we are well over two hundred and fifty city warrants that we have arrested thus far. We have arrested two people on federal warrants. We have recovered approximately twenty-two stolen autos. And recovered stolen property, have an unknown there, that's, that's kind of an interesting case. You would think that we'd be able to track the recovered stolen property that we have been a part of. However, we were inserted into a specific case that I will bring up here at the end of the presentation, where we actually have recovered several thousand items of stolen property linked to numerous burglaries, things like that. So, at this point, we have so much property that we are still counting, weeks and weeks and weeks later of the items that we have recovered. We have recovered methamphetamine, heroin, fentanyl, a variety of different prescription-controlled pills and a volume of marijuana. We've issued sixty-three traffic tickets and we have deployed twelve of the GPS ankle or monitoring bracelets that the jail and the courts use for monitoring our most prolific offenders out in the community. And probably the number to me that, that is most staggering is the search warrants for structures. We have twenty-five search warrants served to date for felony crimes. Couple cases and just to kind of, kind of show the pictures, you know, picture says a thousand, a thousand words. Kind of let you know on a daily basis what these detectives are out in the field and really not just these detectives, but the department in general are out there facing. This was a firearm, a stolen firearm that was recovered during a foot pursuit in our city. The suspect discarded the gun during the foot chase and it was recovered and he was charged with it later. Just a picture of some heroin, some marijuana, some paraphernalia. This case was one of our, I would say, a very prolific offender in the city. He was, he was giving problems to us repeatedly on a weekly basis. A search warrant was obtained and these items were recovered, a considerable amount of currency. That firearm there that actually looks like a toy is actually a firearm, it was stolen, taken in conjunction with the burglary. There's marijuana and some other controlled pills and methamphetamine that was recovered. This is over almost six hundred controlled prescription pills with a street value between five and eight thousand dollars. This case, there was a stolen firearm, some police uniforms that were either purchased or acquired illegally somehow that were in the subject's house. There was body armor, just like the armor that we wear as police officers, and there was a duty belt similar to the ones that we carry, as well as controlled substance that was gathered after a search warrant in our city. This is a couple firearms that were taken in conjunction with a drug distribution network. The interesting thing about this is these firearms have, have homemade threading on the end of the barrel so they can attach the suppressors to make firing the gun undetected. Here's a picture of some of those homemade suppressors and that book that they're actually laying on is, is kind of an older version, but a version of a, kind of a one, two, three on how to build suppressors to attach them to your firearms. And then just some more pictures of some firearms and narcotics, I believe both of these cases, they were felon, felon subjects, they were felons in possession of these firearms while involved in the distribution of controlled substance. This is kind of hard to gauge or see how much or the quantity of this substance, but this is approximately half a pound of a, it's a concoction of several different controlled substances and drugs that, that were fused together. And the most alarming thing to us when this was tested is this contained fentanyl, a high volume of fentanyl. As you probably know from watching the media and everything, that fentanyl is very dangerous for law enforcement, simply just handling it can cause, can have some very serious ill effects. We did recover this during an investigation and actually this was, this caught national attention in the law enforcement community because this specific substance had yet to be reported or identified across the country. So I know that during our investigation, we consulted with a federal partner at which point they. point, they kind of took the reins and identified this, and have put out some national bulletins to law enforcement about this specific substance that we've located and identified here in Independence.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Sergeant, so is that something that's a new street drug that's beginning to come out, or new substance?
Best we can tell, it's a concoction of what I would say would be normal street drugs, or street drugs that are out there and have been around for a long time, but they've fused them together to put a little bit of a twist on it, and they're basically rebranding it and calling it something different, probably just for marketing sake, more than anything.
Interesting. Okay.
So this is a picture of some of the stolen property that we recovered from what we refer to as the red dot burglary case. This was storage units that were being burglarized repeatedly and created a significant amount of victims in our city. During the course of our investigation, once we were inserted, we did identify a subject, we did track that subject, and ultimately were able to make an arrest in that, and cleared almost 50 burglaries. At this point, we have brought almost 20 state charges against that subject, and we have several other that are pending. To give you an idea, this room that this property is stored in, this room was completely vacant. There was nothing in this room. And if this was a pan shot, and you panned all the way to the left of that door, as you see the photo, there was equal amount of property on that side, as well as this. And this is, photo was taken after property was released to 17 victims of that case.
Is that room in the police department building?
It is not in the police department building. It is stored in an off-site location owned by the city. Mainly, we didn't have a room, quite honestly, big enough to house that much stolen property.
So I recall that the covers that I received, remember the property room, and yeah, that wasn't important at all. That stirs up other discussions, might have, for another time. Thank you for, I did take that one to open that. Thought about that.
That's pretty much all I have, a quick update on some of the stats and some of the cases that we've been involved in working.
Fantastic job. Thank you. Comments or questions?
This is like a drop of ink in a clear water. I mean, you've had this phenomenal success, which we thought would be, now comes the grunt work, the court times, the storage, the rehabilitation, the paperwork that you have to go through. The more success you have, the more work you're going to have. But we supported this, and we will support you on this, too.
Excellent. Thank you. You know, it's kind of a unique opportunity. We're the action piece of the big puzzle, so I don't want to take credit that this was all a street crimes endeavor. The street crimes were kind of the action or the enforcement arm in a lot of this, whether it's working with intelligence, working with criminal investigations, working with patrol, we're taking all that information that kind of would stall out oftentimes, and we are doing something immediate with it. And in turn, some of these cases, we are seeing all the way to the end. Some of them, we are turning back over to the investigators in some of these other areas, so they can go ahead and follow up on it and do these presentations, which will help keep us in the field, so we're constantly, constantly moving toward achieving these kinds of goals.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor.
Yes.
Sergeant, so walk me through, how do you get assigned to a certain area, or what criteria do you look at that focuses attention on one spot opposed to another? If I'm a citizen sitting there listening, what have you get directed towards?
So that's, there's a lot of different facets that get brought in when we decide what we're going to address, and eventually, we will address everything that we get handed to us. However, our crime analysts do a phenomenal job, and we will take the, just the data that they are crunching, and then we'll go up on a daily or multi-times a week, and they will give us information and say, hey, this is a trend, or this is a person we're seeing repeated, this is going to be an issue. We also are very engaged out in the community, and that's probably, if I was to say, one of our biggest things, is we will talk to any and everyone, whether it's a suspect, or whether it's somebody in line at QuickTrip, or whether it's a business owner we go in for some reason, we will talk to everyone, and we are asking them, hey, what's going on? Do you have a problem in your neighborhood? Do you have a problem person? Do you have a problem house? And just really actively engaging the community has been something that we have got a lot of information that has kind of driven some of our investigations, quite honestly. So the human intelligence part is huge, as well as just the police reports, you know, the high spikes, you know, in the crime areas, and that's really driving what we're doing as well. So we will take that information, and we are not sitting on any of it. We are acting pretty much immediately. If we get a tip at QuickTrip, if we're not engaged in something else at that moment, we'll rally up a couple guys, and we'll go address that problem that afternoon. And that's really kind of helping with these results.
This is something that I wish we...
This is something I wish we would have done 10 years ago, but we didn't, so here we are. So we're playing catch-up, and I know you guys have a lot of work to do, and there's a lot of interest out there, but this is something that we can definitely talk about, that we have this unit that can be very specific if need to be in areas to help resolve different issues and problems. So I guess, in the future, maybe we should have another unit somehow, some way. But you guys are doing great, so I appreciate your guys' hard work and everything you men and women do over there. It's definitely a challenge, and we've got some big hurdles to go over, but we're moving in the right direction, so.
Thank you.
Anything we can do to help with that, let us know, please.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Sergeant.
Thank you.
Okay, our last presentation, thanks, Major, is on business licensing overview. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yet another success to highlight tonight has been our work in our community development department, where we have consolidated a number of fragmented functions into our regulated industries division. So tonight, we are asking our assistant director of community development, Diane Egger, who oversees that regulated industries division, to really focus on one of the many aspects under her purview, and that is business licensing, where we've seen a number of improvements and efficiencies, and so Diane's going to highlight that for you and really share some of the successes we've had. So I will turn it over to Diane.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Diane Egger. I'm the assistant director for community development. It's hard to follow up on the police with all the stolen goods and stuff, but I'll do my best. So I've been over the business license division over here at community development for a couple of months, and we've made a lot of, not just me, my staff over here, just awesome people, but we've made a lot of progress. We've done some things in the past, we've done some processes and procedures that we're changing and working on, and some, a few things that we're working on in the future, the short-term future. So I'm just going to briefly give you a presentation this evening and go over some of those. Most people know, but some people don't. All businesses that operate in the city of Independence have to have a business license. Whether you're making money in Independence, whether you're local, whether you're out of state, you must obtain a business license. The business license compliance officers, we have four. We've hired an additional one, but we have four that are sitting over here. Great people, awesome, on their own time, came to support me. Yay. Roman Davis, Rachel Ice, Perry Hill, Angela Miller.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yay. Just a great group of people. I mean, I really can't say enough about just how wonderful they are. Some of the business license functions that we oversee, some of the umbrella, what I call the umbrella portions of business license, or just the actual business license itself, liquor licensing, landlord licensing, the rental ready program, and the landlord-tenant complaints, which is something new that we've picked up from property maintenance. We've moved it over to the business license division. And we also oversee all these different kinds of businesses, retail stores, hotels, restaurants. I just didn't know when I started, you know, carnivals and metal recyclers, all these different businesses that we oversee have to have a business license. And so we make sure that they come into compliance, and if they have questions, that they can come and ask us. License numbers, we have over 9,000 businesses in Independence, and we've run the numbers as well. Over, around 10% of them are delinquent or out of compliance with their business license. So we have roughly 10% of businesses out there that are operating illegally. So what do we do to change that? Well, there's a little slide down here. I'll talk about that briefly. Some of the changes that we've made in the past, looking just briefly to the past, and I'll go to the future, we have some of the changes, the business application process, we've looked at that and streamlined it. So when someone would come in and fill out a business license application, it had some additional wording, some duplication of questions that were asked, and so we've streamlined that to make it easier for people, and they just have fewer questions when they come in, it's easier to fill out. So that was really awesome. Sounds simple also, a voicemail update, sounds like a very simple thing, which it is, but we've made it more automated. And so where we used to have, almost everyone would call in to business license, you'd immediately need to talk to a person. What we've done is, they've changed it to where it'll, you know, this is where we are, this is what you'll do if you have questions, you know, then push one, or whatever it is, and so then to finally get a person. But that cut down our call volume by 80%, which is a lot. So a lot of these people call, and they have a simple question, and they can get those answered. So just to, you know, help staff, just to make it streamline it, make it more efficient, that's what we've done. We've also looked at the business license renewal forms. The old way of renewing a business license form is, we'd send out 30 days prior to an expiration date of a business license, we'd send out, hey, you have 30 days, your business license is going to expire. Say it's expired, after that, we would send out multiple notices. Hey, hello, your business license expired. And then another one, hey, guess what? It's still expired. And so we've just cut that off, save money on paper, we spend a lot of money on paper, and so we're trying to make it greener and more efficient. We're sending one notice 30 days prior to your business license expiring. Hey, come and get your business license. And if they don't, that's what we're going to talk about in just another slide, but so that was, that's something that has been changed. We're also scanning a lot of old paperwork, a lot of old documents. Again, just something really simple, but it helps streamline the process, it helps that we scanned it, put it into City Works, so that multiple people can see it, rather than some papers sticking, you know, in a file cabinet behind somebody's desk. If somebody even from another apartment has access to City Works, and they want to look something up, then they can look something up. It's just more transparency for the city, and less paperwork. So looking forward, we're looking forward to a couple of big, kind of big items. We're looking at combining a business license as a, today, if a contractor, city contractor comes out, or any contractor to work in the city, they have to fill out both a business license and a contractor's license. So what we're going to do, staff has done a really great job of contacting other jurisdictions to see on different things that we do, how they do it differently than what we do, and what we found is that a lot of jurisdictions around us combine those into one license. It doesn't necessarily change the fee at all, but it just streamlines, when they come in, hey, here's the one window you go to, rather than go to this window and then come over here to get this as well, rather than getting two licenses, they get one. And also, with the nearly 10% of the non-compliant business licenses that we have out there, we're getting set April 1st, which is just next week, to start the enforcement of a business license program. So what we're going to do, we've hired, we've got an equipment for staff, we have the great staff, they're being trained, ready to hit the road, and on April 1st, they're going to start running reports on who is delinquent on a business license, and then we're going to go out and visit those businesses and make sure that they come into compliance. So how are we going to do that? Well, this is how, on April 1st, so this is the, what we'll work under, the city code that we'll work under. Everybody has to get a business license if you're doing business, engaging in activity in the city, and this is how we're going to do it. So we're going to run a report of the delinquent businesses, not all through the past, but for the previous month. Whoever came delinquent the previous month, we're going to go out that following month. We have a letter written up, we're going to print it off, hand-deliver it to the business, talk to them, talk to the owner, talk to the business, and tell them you have 48 hours to come in and get your business license. And if they don't, then we will go and post the property. So that should bring them in. That should bring in...
That's to do it, John.
Any questions? Questions? I'm feeling questions here, everyone. But that's what we're going to do. And you know, I found that when I was over, you know, with the food inspections, if we did that, if we went and talked to people, sometimes they just don't know. They don't get the mail, they're unaware, you know, most often times, it's a $75 fee. They're just not aware of what's transpiring, and there's also extenuating circumstances for things. So we'll work with people, but for the most part, that's what we're going to do. This is your business license, you have to have it. If everyone else has to have it, so do you.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Diane, so what does that mean when you say post? That means...
Oh, so that would, we would give them 48 hours, so you know, the plan is, you know, we have this all worked out by days, because you have to give them, you know, you don't want to go out necessarily on a Friday that we could, not as, you know, user-friendly for the beginning, to go, the run out here. But when we go post the property, it will be closed. It will be a closure notice.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, and we would go out in the morning, they would have to run up, they could come up anytime, eight to five, get a business license, they're good to go.
Can they do it online?
Yes.
Okay. So they don't even have...
Yeah, they don't have to physically come up.
I mean, they can come, they can do it in the middle of the night if they want to.
That's exactly right, yes.
Okay. Very good.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, that's good. I'm glad they're getting out there. Heard you got some new vehicles to get out there, and not have to be towed back.
That's exactly right. We do have nice, quiet electric vehicles.
Did we get rid of the car with the hole in the side of it, or we still got that one?
The one with the square tires? No, we got rid of that one, Mayor.
Yeah, okay. All right. Just checking.
No, we have all nice, electric vehicles, and yeah, so the staff has all the equipment. They have the vehicles, the badges, the ticket books, they're ready to roll.
One other little follow-up thing, I got a complaint from a constituent, an older retired person. They called, I won't call the name out because I have nothing against Roto-Rooter. So they called this company out there, and they gave the lady an estimate. They came up to City Hall and got a permit for a tremendously, tremendously lower amount than they actually charged the customer. So is there maybe some way we could think of to maybe verify what they're getting the permit for, which is the minimum fee, but yet they're charging the customer a different fee, and we're losing the difference in fees? I don't know how you do it, but just make you aware of that.
I don't know, but there's got to be something that we can do, yeah.
But the difference was, the difference between a $2,000 bill and a $9,000 bill, and the permit was taken on the $2,000. And I got a complaint from elderly person, they didn't feel that was a fair price, which that's really not our issue, but in further checking into it, that's how they shortchanged, also, they feel they may have shortchanged the customer in the work, they shortchanged the city in the fees.
Yeah, we will definitely look into that.
Thanks.
There are always to figure that out.
Councilman?
I see here 9,000. Is that correct?
Yes.
And a third of that is rentals, 3,000 rentals that we, business license, which we've, what, tripled since the program began? Perry?
On the rental ready. We've increased that by 1,000. The actual rental units, though, yeah, units, the licensing, we've increased by 1,000. If that's what you're asking.
1,000 from two? Okay.
So we have 3,000 total, 3,120.
And still counting.
No, it's a lot, yeah. We have a lot, yeah.
Yeah, and still coming in.
But the rental units, that before the rental ready program, we had 2,900 roughly, and now we have 19,000 on the books. So we've, yeah, we're starting to, yeah, really get a handle on that, so. So now we want to make sure we get the business licenses.
I'm not saying it's the best ever.
Yeah.
Second best. Just back to the enforcement and the compliance and all of that, I mean, yeah, I mean, it seems much more efficient to send them a notice, and then if you don't get it from them, pay them a visit, and make sure that it gets handled. I mean, time and time again, whether it's property code violation, I mean, the sweeps that we did on 24 Highway, 40 Highway, Truman Road, we've got a tremendous, rental readies, another example, really a really high voluntary compliance rate, once people understand that, you know, they dig it out from the bottom of the pile, or whatever, get to it. So I think that's a really great approach, which I know is somewhat labor-intensive for your staff to do that, but I think in the long run, it's going to be much more efficient, and much more in line with our customer service goals for the city, is to have that personal touch. And I think, you know, maybe, you know, one friendly visit is a lot more effective than four or five reminders in the mail. If they didn't get the first one, they're not getting the second one, they're not getting the third one.
Right.
So, thanks for implementing that, and, you know, I know all your people on your staff, and they're great representatives of the city, to go out and have those conversations. So although it sounds... So, although it sounds maybe kind of punitive, I really don't think that it is, I think it's a much, you know, better way to deal with our citizens, and our past successes are, you know, has really shown that those one-on-one going out and visiting with people really brings those people, they want to be in compliance, I mean, most of them...
Yes, most people do, yes, they do, they truly do.
They want to do what's right, they just, you know, for whatever reason, they might do it.
They might need a friendly reminder.
Right, exactly. You're right, anything else?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I mean, just to tap into this just a little bit, when you first got up there, you said you thought it would be hard to beat, but you're working perfectly into a good segue there, because we're doing things different with our police department, with our street crimes unit. We're trying to get aggressive here with people with business license, and I do believe, Mayor, that a lot of people have a good heart, and they just forgot through the mail, but there's also, there's been a long time, decade, of where nobody's ever followed up, done the work, and go knock on the door, and that's the difference there, that we're willing to do that, and I think that's gonna start, I don't say shake people up, but know that we're serious about stuff now. So, it's, your presentation is this perfect segue that we had there with the police, because we're trying to do things different, just takes a little bit of time, just kind of get that corner and get moving, so, thanks for that.
And I think after a couple of months, and people hear about it, maybe we have some closures, then maybe people will come into compliance on their own.
Mm-hmm, yeah, great.
Thanks.
Yeah, I would be really interested in, you know, sometime in the next six months or so, kind of a little bit of an update on how that's going. I mean, I expect tremendous results from that approach of voluntary compliance, which is, you know, in turn, revenue to the city, but also, I think, creates a more business-friendly atmosphere when people know what the expectations are, and that they're gonna be held accountable to those expectations.
Right, and everyone to the same standard.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, Diane.
Thank you.
Okay, lastly this evening, we have City Boards and Commissions Report. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. In front of you have our City Boards and Commissions Report. We have three items to discuss. First on the list is the Independence Advisory Board of Health. There has been a recommendation to appoint Shawna Jackson as a lay member of the board, so I'm seeking direction to add a resolution to the next meeting.
If there's no objection from the council, we will forward Shawna Jackson to the next regular council meeting for a resolution for the next council meeting. Okay, hearing none.
Next, we have the Japanese Sister City Committee. We have a recommendation to reappoint Chrissy De Meyer and appoint Max Land, Dustin Heinrich, and Hannah Newberry to the committee, so I'm seeking direction to add a resolution for those persons.
Okay, again, if there's no objection from the council, we will have the city clerk prepare a resolution for the next council meeting. Okay, hearing none.
And lastly, we have the Tourism Commission. There's a recommendation has been received to appoint President Russell Cannon as the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints representative to the commission, seeking direction to add a resolution.
If there's no objection from the council, we'll have the city clerk prepare a resolution for the next council meeting. Okay, hearing none. Are there any other topics any council member wishes to discuss this evening? Mr. City Manager, anything?
Nothing else, thank you.
We're adjourned.